All right, you guys should be good for a board meeting. Holler at me if you need me.
Okay, thank you, Bo. Linda, when you're ready, we can just call the meeting to order, please.
I know, I don't have an agenda. Did I miss that?
It should be on the upload.
It's in the upload.
I'll, oh, in, um.
Google Drive.
Google Drive. I had trouble with my computer trying to get all this stuff up ahead of time. So, um, under Google Drive, no, I don't. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, formality, Joy, go ahead and do roll call.
Tim Barrett.
Here.
Okay, Linda Duncan, he is here?
Here.
Uh, Jeremy Leaf.
Here.
Um, Rob Metzger. And Tara Oyn.
Here.
All right, yeah, I'm not finding my... Oh, there it is.
Oh, I can go over it, Linda. I can.
Go ahead. It's being, it's being really slow to load.
No, that's fine. Why don't you look for it and I'll just...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just go over the individual action items and then when it gets to the point.
I just dropped the link to the agenda in the chat. Make it easier for you, Linda. So click on the chat and you should see a link right to the agenda. Right-hand side toward the top. It looks like a little message icon next picture of you.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you. Yep. Yay, thank you. Redirecting.
Okay, well.
I'll tell you when I have it.
We have several action items on here tonight. The first one being our master contract. Uh, we agreed, we had a tentative agreement with, uh, the WEA from last month. Uh, the union ratified it, uh, last week. And so, letter A is our master contract with them. You can see, uh, in the handouts, what that looks like, um. Stacy, do you want to make any comments on that? Basically, at the end of the day, it was a 3.036 percentage package in there. And you can see on that, uh, I don't know, that 2020, 2021 titled sheet, that's what the new money was, the 222, 591, and the total package increase was 296, 359. Stacy does a good job of, um, summarizing everything there in between. Are there questions on that as far as our master contract with the WEA? And then you can actually see what that master contract looks like. It's only three pages. The main thing in the master contract anymore is the base salary is what's put in there. That's the generator base. Are there any questions on that? On each of these, we'll need a, um, motion in a second. They'll all be individual.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the master contract.
A motion to approve the master contract.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the 2021 staff handbook?
Yep, for the new board members, a few years ago, this used to be all in the master contract when there was changes made at the state level with chapter 20. Um, it was pulled out to be put in a master, well, not a master, but actually a staff handbook, which means it's non-negotiable. So there are no changes per se to the language pieces. Uh, the only changes that are in there would be with salary schedule B. Uh, we made a few revisions there, if you remember from our conversations and our interest-based problem solving about, um, moving a few positions around as far as instrumental music and, uh, science club in there. The salary schedule A, that actually has the lanes, that's where, that's where that is located. Salary schedule B, which is our extracurricular contracts, and salary schedule C, which is our school nurse, that's in there as well. But you'd have to scroll to the right. There are separate documents how they've been added. But you can see salary schedule A, B, and C. And each one of those salary schedules, that base generator number is on salary schedule A, the upper left-hand corner, that 333, 422. Now, that's not a beginning teacher's salary with the teacher, the supplemental stat- well, I'm slaughtering it, Stacy. TSS is the teacher supplemental salary. Am I saying that right?
Teacher's salary supplement.
Yes, uh, the additional 7,123. So a first-year teacher that works in Wilton, that's right out of college, or it's their first job, and they've got a bachelor's degree, their starting salary is 40,545. That TSS goes way back to when Governor Culver was in office, when they tried to, uh, increase teacher salaries to get it closer to the national average. But they never did put it into the salary schedule. So, for example, we're figuring out what our head football coach makes. Instead of going off a percentage of that 40,545, they go off that, uh, generator, which is that 33, 422. Does that make sense in just understanding that a little bit? But that's the staff handbook for 2021.
Joe, do you want to explain at all why the generator is different on salary schedule B for Jeremy and Tim?
In terms of why the salaries, why don't you go ahead and explain that, Stacy, as far as, I thought I just did.
Well, the base generator is different on salary schedule B because, um, what year was that? Um, I don't have that listed on here, but the year that we cut, the teachers used to have a contract for 188 days.
Exactly.
We knocked that down to 181 days, when we could go from hours to days for the time for school. But if we, so we knocked the, we knocked some salary off of salary schedule A and B because they were gonna work, or A and C because they were gonna work less days. But B, there wasn't really anybody getting less days in their contract. So if we would have, uh, reduced their base generator on salary schedule B, coaches would have been working the same and making less money. So we left the base generator on salary schedule B the same that year. So if, so when we add to the base generator, um, you'll always see that schedule B is higher because that year it did not take a reduction.
Nope, that's exactly right, Stacy. Are there any other questions with, uh, the staff handbook?
If not, entertain a motion to accept the handbook.
Move to.
I move to.
Go ahead.
You can get, go ahead, Rob.
I moved to for the staff handbook.
My second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to Precision Builders contract.
Yes, I'll, uh, I'll let Tim speak here in a second. I just wanted to, um, make mention here that the good news is, is we are within, uh, the budget range that we had put out. Uh, we've worked very diligently. I have to give credit to Tim's people, to Bo Huber who's here, Joe Raggett's, Justin, um, and everyone that's been involved from the school side and trying to really put our, you know, sharpen our pencils to see where we could get this to where it worked. And, uh, I'm glad to say that we do have a, a situation where it does, and that's, that was obviously the goal. There's only, there's a few, there's several changes, okay, but it still fits the scope of the original product that we wanted. And, uh, the pictures that were presented, the actual footage, square footage, the only difference from a square footage piece is at one time, we had talked about having a corridor, if you will, on the east side, okay, of the building, which was basically a hallway that ran adjacent to the lobby area. And so, to try to trim some of our costs, we took that corridor off. But that does not affect the lobby, nor does it affect, you know, the, the restrooms, the concession stand in there, et cetera, et cetera. But that was one of the changes that was made. And Tim can walk through what some of these changes were, but in each one of these sheets, there's seven of them. You can see what each of the subcontractors, uh, did to, uh, make adjustments in the conversations that we had in trying to get our numbers within the budget that we needed to be within. Everything from a different ice maker to different drains with PVCs, um, everything added up to get it to where we needed it to be. And each one of the contracts that we approve, we'll approve the contract, but we'll also approve the change order, which basically lessens it. For example, when we go to the Precision Builders contract here in a second, you can see that the original amount is for 1.884 million. Uh, because we're, we shifted some builder's risk to come out of our management fund. We took out some of the quartz flooring and the floor logo. Uh, instead of having the quartz flooring, we're going to use, uh, the epoxy that we currently have in the school, et cetera, et cetera. That dropped their, uh, cost, if you will, uh, by almost $200,000. Okay, you see deleting that east corridor that I was referring to, the hallway is $42,451. Okay, as an example. But each one of those, you can see what the base changes were in, uh, or not base changes, but the change in the bids based upon, um, the conversations and, uh, recommendations to be made to get it within our budgetary number. Tim, do you want to, uh, go through each of these contracts, or just talk a little about the project and where we're at and timeline? I, I did mention to Tim and Mark Moyn that, you know, our, our target was to start June 1st. And if there's anything they can do to get started earlier with school being, um, out for the year, that certainly gives them the flexibility to co- quite honestly, start whenever they want to. I realize they need to, uh, coordinate everything and get going, and their target is still June 1st. But they certainly have the ability to, they can start tomorrow if they wanted to. But Tim, do you want to talk about anything on here, anything, and answer questions that the board may have? That's just a little bit of background on my side.
Sure. Um, yes, I did speak to Precision Builders yesterday. They were, they'll be the first ones to move in. Um, they think it's very possible if they could get started right around May 1st. So that's just about a month ahead of, ahead of originally scheduled. Um, in regards to the contracts that need approval, um, I just want to point out that if you're gonna be approving the base bid plus alternate M1, which was the air conditioning of the existing high school gym, we did not go with alternate A1, which was replacing the existing metal panels around the gymnasium. I think we're just, in our base bid, we're just gonna paint those.
Correct.
So, you know, the first one up was Precision Builders. They're the, they'd be the contractor for the general construction bid package. So we will need a vote on the, uh, base bid plus the alternate M1, and then a vote on the credit change order, which I've listed out on that sheet, the items, and Joe just went through them. Are there any questions on any of those items?
So where's the contingency, or what is the contingency for the project? I didn't see that in the documentation anywhere.
Stacy, do you want to talk about that while we build in on our end?
Yes, currently, there's, to get in the budget, there, there is no contingency.
We have a contingency on our end, Rob, that we build into this. Stacy, you want to give an approximate number on that?
Yeah, if we sell our bonds for 2 million, which hopefully we'll be doing in May, then we should have a contingency of 150 to 200,000.
Okay.
And honestly.
That was my question too, Rob.
With the size of this project, um, you know, hopefully we get all the ground with the foundation without any hiccups with bad soils or something like that. And then from then on, there really shouldn't be anything major for a change unless you, as the school district, decided to make some changes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So do you, do you need to vote on these one at a time, or you want to go through all four of them first?
Well, why don't you answer any questions or go over anything on the preci- is there any? Uh, how do I say this? I know the board's had this in front of them. I sent the information to them yesterday, but I don't know, is there any, does anyone have any questions on the Precision Builders, uh, contract as far as anything with that? I mean, we can go through these one at a time if there's specific questions with them. If not, I would just need a motion to approve the Precision Builders contract, but also put in there with the addition of alternate M1, which isn't, which includes our air conditioning, which is what we want, and that's part of the base bid, so.
So we're voting on, or we need a motion for item C?
Yep.
And then we'll do D?
Yep.
And that's all, and those are the things we've talked about, right?
Correct.
All right. So I'd entertain a motion for number C on our agenda, Precision Builders contract?
I motion to approve, um, letter C for Precision Builders con- excuse me, contract.
I'll second.
We need that, do we need something else with that, Joe? Did you just say?
Well, i- as long as you say as stated, which includes the alternate M1, which includes the air conditioning, that's cool. That's what the document says, but that's part of the contract. I thi- I think we're covered as long as we say as stated.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Item C for Precision Builders contract as stated?
I will second.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. And then we can do D because we've talked about that also, correct?
Well, we can answer questions about it. The, the next few are much smaller in scope. It's our fire protection, uh, system that's being put in. Tim, do you have any, any comments on those, anything to point out? I mean, I don't know if there's a lot to talk about there.
Well, that's different to, that's not Precision Builders. That's a different contract, but.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Is there anything under that contract that you want to point out to the board of anything?
But I don't think we voted on D yet.
No, that's, oh, we have to do letter D, don't we? The change order.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. Yes.
Yes, you were. That's okay. So we've discussed that, or we?
We have. We've discussed letter D, but any questions, I mean, if there's questions, ask.
You need a motion to approve the point, or the Precision Builder contract with the change orders, is that?
Well, we just need to approve change order number one.
Okay.
Correct.
Within the Precision Builder.
I'll move to approve change order number one for Precision Builders then.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we can go on to the Tracco Fire Protection E and F.
Yes, and basically what you'll see there, there's one credit there for, as far as the change order, it's, um, and that has to do with deleting that east corridor. They just, there's a few sprinkler heads and a little bit of pipe they don't have to do for that. Otherwise, there's not much change we can do with the fire sprinkler.
So we just need to approve letter E and F tied to the fire protection system with Tracco.
I move to approve letter E for fire protection along with the order change number one.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we did E and F. Now we're going on to G, Crawford Company.
Yes, Crawford Company. As far as their, their changes, um, you know, also that east corridor, they got a credit there. They deleted the builder's risk insurance. They changed into some water piping from what was specified materials to using a PEX material. And then they're just, um, literally changing the brands with some funny pictures. I sent you the email that kind of outlines of how they were, they were changing the fixtures.
So how the builder's risk insurance work and why can we get away, how is it that we can delete that and be okay?
We're able to, and Stacy, Stacy, do you want to, Stacy, do you want to answer that as far as what we can take out of our management fund?
Yeah, hang on. It's a lot more expensive for, um, the contractors to get their own builder's risk insurance rather than have us do that. Um, and we've done that in the past. And so I, um, got a quote for that. And I'm looking it up right here. Um, and we can actually ensure the whole project for like, um, I think it was $2,200 with a thousand dollar deductible as opposed to all of these contractors. And that will come out of our management fund.
Okay. So the insurance is there, we're just covering it as the district?
Yes, and they actually, the premium, um, and at the time, this is before we made cuts because I got a quote back in March, the beginning of March, the premium for a $2.3 million project, which now we're below that, um, with a thousand dollar deductible was $2,050. So much cheaper than, so I'm not sure why, uh, why we wouldn't always carry our own builder's risk and not pay for it through the contractors.
When we go to approve these, we need to approve them individually. We need to approve the contract for the Crawford Company and then approve the contract, or approve the change order, like number one with the Crawford Company is the second one. So the letter G should be the Crawford Company contract.
Okay, so we need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Crawford Company, that letter G?
Yep.
With, with the, what was the other, the number one?
This contract, Crawford Company contract.
We gotta do it separate.
Okay, okay. So I make a motion.
Okay.
I second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Then we can go ahead and do the Crawford Company change order one because we've already talked about it, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion for H.
Motion to approve H, Crawford Company change order number one.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to Ace Electric.
Last one, Ace Electric. Let's see.
Yes, um, they had several items there, again, the east corridor and the, the builder's risk. They're changing the material for the feeders. And a lot of these, these items here, I don't have a lot of information on. I know that your facilities team worked directly with Ace Electric on a lot of these items. So, um, if you have some questions, I can answer it. I can get with them and, and get back to you on it, but I know like the TVs, there was a certain amount of TVs included originally. They've cut that down. And they've cut down the number of, of, uh, locations for them. Then I believe you guys are gonna go in and purchase some TVs, so.
Bo could probably answer some of those questions on Ace Electric, but there were some of those things we felt that we could do ourselves at less costs, and also it's something we could phase in with our one cent sales tax as we move forward as well. So it's not like those, you know, putting the televisions, locations, and that sort of thing. Well, everything mounted, or not mounted, but wired and whatnot, but we can do a lot of that stuff on our own and at a later date.
And they're still gonna install power for the TVs. Justin and I are just gonna ac- acquire them and hang them, things like that. Uh, fiber, it was easier to move in-house because it's a really labor-intensive project that's really not that hard to run it. And it's things like that where we kind of split the work with Ace, you know, where we can be the labor. Ace can do the really hard parts for us, like the actual electrical stuff. We can run some of it in between and save some money.
All right, so if there's no more questions for Bo or Tim, we need to do I first a motion to, for Ace Electric contract?
Motion to approve contract with Ace Electric?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and then J, the Ace Electric change order number one.
I move to approve letter J, the Ace Electric change order number one.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to the student-teacher agreement.
Well, hey, before we get to that, Tim is free to go, but are there any other questions that the board has for, uh, Tim as we move forward? I'm, I'm really excited about this project, and I think like a lot of projects, how do I say this? You have to hone things in within your budget, and I think it's really forced us to look at everything very closely. And I think we really understand and, you know, know what's going into our lobby edition because of this. And so I mentioned this earlier, but I appreciate everyone's work on it. And, uh, ultimately, I'm really grateful what the Townshends are donating, uh, to see this come through. It's, it's really going to be a nice addition to the South End. This is something we've talked about for, I don't know how many years, you know, that we've had this, uh, vision, if you will. And, um, it's actually, you know, if they start first part of May, it's, it's going to be here soon, so it's really an exciting time. Any final questions for Tim? Otherwise, we can let him go and we can move forward, but I just want to make that comment.
Nope, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. I appreciate it. I will, uh, work it on the schedule, so once we have that finalized, I will get you the information.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Hey, just be in touch with us. I'm sure we'll need to have a sit-down once, uh, and roll this out.
Yep, we'll, we'll do that. We'll have a kickoff, PD.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
You bet. Now we can move forward, Linda.
All right, now, the Iowa Wesleyan student-teacher agreement, which I think is a standard.
Some of these things are just our standard, uh, agreements that we sign each spring, and you'd probably see it at the May agenda. But I thought since we've got this stuff in, we would just crank it out tonight. But, um, we have different teaching agreements with different universities. San Ambrose typically, University of Iowa, University of Northern Iowa, Iowa Wesleyan, et cetera. So it's just, it's a standard student-teacher agreement that would allow them to potentially place teachers here. They may or may not next year, but we have to have something in place that allows them to do it. Are there any individual questions on that? Are there any individual questions on that?
If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the teaching agreement with Iowa Wesleyan.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Alright, next.
Yeah, we have Beau here. He can maybe answer some questions if you have them, but the letter L, it's for the sixth-grade classroom Chromebook bids because uh, our teachers didn't go to the national conference that was scheduled in March. Uh, we repurposed that money uh, from the Townshends to go to uh, some additional technology. And the recommendation is to go with the Journey ED or Ed at twenty-two thousand one oh four twenty-two. And that'll give each classroom twenty-six uh, Chromebooks for a total of seventy-eight. Beau, is there anything you want to comment on with that?
Hmm. It'll bring them up to touchscreens like some of the other grades, which should be good and help kind of get our cycles not all on the same year, which is also good. So it's a great thing for us. Denise, do you have anything to add to that, too?
Alright, well, we just need a motion to approve uh, the bid as stated.
I move to approve the Chromebook bid for Journey ED for twenty-two thousand one hundred and four twenty-two.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Alright, next, we have a resignation.
Yeah, we have two resignations. Uh, one, Nicole Anderson's uh, been our high school wrestling cheer coach. And then Marsha Hetzler, the academic team advisor. So we need to do those individually, but that, those are both for next year.
Motion to approve the resignation of Nicole Anderson as cheer coach.
I will second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries and then N for Marsha Hetzler.
I'll make a motion for the resignation of Marsha Hetzler, academic team advisor.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Alright, job description for human resource director.
Yeah, as, as I've kept the board up to date, um, we've advertised for the human resources director, which as we know is a, a shared position with the Durant District that qualifies for operational sharing of equivalent to five FTEs or approximately thirty-five thousand dollars in incentive money to go toward this position. Uh, Stacy's worked diligently to put this together as far as what the verbiage is and also worked with Lisa Kephardt, the SPO in Durant. So they're very, very similar. There's maybe a couple differences between Will and Durant's based upon what, you know, was done individually in these districts. But uh, thought it'd be good timing to have the board approve the job description as we are looking to get this person on board by the first of July. Applications, we put an end date as May eighth and we're hoping to interview at the end of May and uh, have somebody in front of the board for, well, I can approve it, but at least hopefully have that approved by the first part of June and have them start the first of July. So are there any questions for me and/or Stacy with the verbiage on the job description? The line that's the catch-all is, you know, whether the duty is as assigned. So it's pretty much, that's always the line you have to have in there because, you know, there are things that pop up.
If no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion for um, job description, human resources director.
Move to approve the job.
Motion for the job description of the human resource director.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. If there's nothing else, uh, Joe, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment so we can go on to the work session.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Alright, we.
Time-wise, obviously, we can do it.
Yep, I always, yeah, make sure that we.
Right.
You can always start after the time. You just can't start before. So I always front-load that to make sure we can. I always find humor in different things, but this is like, I feel like we're playing school board jeopardy here as far as people getting in to make the motions or not. Your box lights up if it's you and if not, you're out. School board jeopardy, you must phrase your motion in the form of a question.
Oh, yeah. Alright, so we'll go to the work session.
Yes, the main thing on the work session to start with tonight, um, and obviously we had a long, that's, that's probably one of the longer special meetings we've ever had. But I wanted the principals to give updates on where they're at in their buildings academically and also to finish out the school year and, and um, you know, we were given the directive by Governor Reynolds last Friday and we met on Monday and I've been saying to the principals that it seems like with all of the proclamations by the governor are coming up like on a Friday over the weekend. And so we've had a lot of crazy Mondays over the last uh, five or six weeks because it's like, well, what's the parameters now? And then a couple of weeks later, we get new parameters and it's just trying to play uh, COVID whack-a-mole of like what's coming up and how are we gonna handle this? And so if anything now, we don't have, the next proclamation the governor has to make as far as with summer sports. You know, that's the big thing on, you know, what'll be coming up and she's supposed to make a proclamation on that uh, by the first of June. Um, and if we're able to have summer sports, obviously it'd be a shortened season, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. We've still got six weeks before we get to that point. That being said, uh, one of the major points of discussion that we had administratively, particularly at the secondary level, um, is uh, graduation. And Mr. Snively's, we've had a lot of discussion this week and ultimately it came down to uh, Mr. Snively invited a couple of the class officers, NHS, or not NHS, but uh, the class president and uh, the student council president in to pick their brain because the other day this is their day and their family's day. And so we're here to serve them and do the best we can with that and, and uh, Mr. Snively also sent out a survey. So instead of me talking about it, Mr. Snively, do you want, and he had a principals meeting today with the conference and it's amazing how everybody's all over the board because the bottom line is nobody really knows when restrictions will be lifted. You know, if we had a crystal ball that said you'd be able to, you know, I, I haven't seen anything and I could be off, but I don't know if phase one goes from recommended ten people in a meeting to fifty or a hun, you know, I haven't seen any parameters on how that would uh, escalate, if you will. Um, because graduation may be, you know, depending on where the numbers are at in the phasing. Maybe it's just the graduating class is able to get together, you know? We don't know how big a crowd we could have. So there's still a lot of unknowns out there. Um, but the end of the day, we want to give our kids the best shot of having a traditional graduation if possible, but I don't know if that is possible. Mr. Snively, why don't you take it from here and then answer any questions aboard as? That's my rambling.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright. I, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Is somebody, is somebody not muted here? Let me look. Okay, I think I'm good. Okay, um, yeah, yeah, this is a hot topic, graduation. So in my mind, and Mr. Burnett and I have talked and we've talked administratively, um, so when we came into this, beginning of this week, in my mind, I thought the best solution would be to try to set up a virtual graduation and to pre-record everything. And when I say that, I'm talking about when Mr. Burnett opens up, you know, record that, take snippets from the band last year, record it and make it look like as real as we could. And I even thought about having the students come in and we would uh, video them crossing the stage in their cap and gown. Uh, we would have them come down, we'd do the tassel flip, we'd videotape all that, splice all that together and it would take a lot of work, but it could be done and make that into a graduation ceremony. And then I thought on that graduation morning on May seventeenth, we could release that video and, and we would play it live and everybody would be included and, and it would be, be kind of a nice little keepsake item. And then that actual graduation day, we were thinking about having a parade where all the students would line up in the parking lot. Um, I even talked to Chief Clark on this to coordinate it with the city council and everything. So they would line up in the parking lot and go out the south entrance and they would have their cars decorated with their names on them. Parents would be in the cars and we would basically run a parade route, much like Founder's Day. And then to finish it up, they would come around the corner um, by the electronic sign, the new electronic sign. And I would read their name off. We would put their, their picture and their name up on the electronic screen. We would Facebook Live that and have that be a really cool ceremony. And as they drove through, we would hand them their diploma, um, all the senior awards and scholarships because we're gonna have to record our senior awards night now, too. We're not gonna be able to have that. So um, we thought if we put all that on a thumb drive and handed it to the, the families and they'd have this really nice keepsake item, um, it would be kind of above and beyond what any of our other graduates get. Okay? So that's what we, at the beginning of the week, really thought graduation should look like. So then um, administratively, we talked a little bit more and we thought we probably need to get graduates, um, get their input as well as parents. So um, I called in uh, those two high school students that Mr. Burnett referenced and immediately they hated that idea. I mean, I played it out to them and they hated it. They were like, no, we appreciate all your thought you put into this, but we really think um, having that live graduation ceremony is the way that we want to go and the way that all the students in the, the graduating class want to go. So while we were sitting there, I don't know, it was probably about a forty-five-minute conversation. One of the students picked up their phone and they, in that half an hour, had pretty much surveyed the entire senior class on what they would want to do. So they walked out of that meeting. Um, basically, that student survey uh, showed that eighty-eight percent of seniors wanted it in-person, twelve percent wanted it virtual. Okay, so I wasn't real confident that everybody was included on that. Um, and I, there is some discrepancy about maybe some kids voted twice and things like that. So I worked with Beau and Jill and yesterday, uh, before the end of the day, we sent a survey out to all the senior parents and graduates. And it basically outlined what I just outlined to you about the virtual ceremony pre-recorded versus delaying it. And the data, uh, Beau sent this to me this afternoon. The data basically shows that seventy percent of those surveyed, and there were sixty-seven responses, by the way, um, seventy percent of those surveyed wanted in-person. Um, thirty percent wanted virtual. So basically, those, I have two data points that tell us that they want it in-person. Now, in that conversation with the class president and the student council president, I said, I get it. If I was a senior in your shoes, I would want it in-person. If I was a parent of a graduate, I would want it in-person. But please realize, we're in the middle of a pandemic. And if we delay this thing to say July, because the date we're looking at right now is July twelfth. If we delay this to July, there is a chance that our social distancing numbers may be at ten. There's a chance they might, they may be at fifty. If they're at fifty, we still can't bring people together. If they're at a hundred, we could have the graduates in our gym, per se, but parents would not be allowed in. I mean, we have to follow the guidelines of the governor's office and the Department of Public Health. So there is some risk to this. So when I make decisions, I think about the risk versus reward. And so I thought the virtual would be a chance to have all the kids together for that parade. The whole community could showcase this because we would, we'd reach out to Derek and we'd put it in the paper and it would look much like maybe the Founder's Day parade and we would give everybody their diploma. And the, the chances of us, of us having all the kids there, it's gonna be pretty high. Okay? I truly believe if we delay this uh, into June or July, it's gonna fizzle out. The, the excitement of graduation is probably gonna go, um, go away, especially as, as kids. If we have a baseball, softball season, people are gonna be busy. Um, we have three students that are going in the military and I know two of them leave in June. So we've already done away with those two kids if we, if we delay it. Um, there's kids that are moving to go to college uh, out of state that I know are, are planning to move before that date. So I think, I think if we delay it, um, first of all, I think we should delay it because the data tells us to delay it. Um, I, I really do think we should delay it. Um, but we also have to get people to understand that once we delay it, everybody has to understand that it's not gonna look like our traditional ceremony. We're probably more than likely not gonna be able to pack five hundred people into one gym. We're probably, well, we don't have a band, we're not gonna have a band because we don't have a band instructor under contract at that time. They've had zero time to practice. Um, our choir probably will not sing a song unless we can pull that together somehow uh, through virtual learning. So that just makes things interesting. So everything else we can probably pull off, but there's a lot of uncertainty about the future. So um, we're not in, we're not in any different situation than any other school. So I had a River Valley Conference meeting today and here's my third data point. In talking with the principals, three of those schools are planning to do some kind of a drive-in ceremony where they drive through with their parents, they come out to a stage and they get their diploma and they walk across the stage and then they get back in their car and they drive away and that kind of a thing. One school's uh, working with a radio station where they're gonna broadcast it on the radio and so people are gonna listen through the radio in their cars. So three of them are going um, kind of that combo, pre-recorded, virtual, drive-in type of thing. So they would have to pre-record some of the stuff and be live for some of the stuff. Um, one of those, one school is gonna go totally virtual. I will tell you, of these four schools, they haven't really surveyed their community yet. So I, I just warned them. I said, you guys are thinking exactly like I am, but just please know, if you reach out to your students, they're gonna think differently than you do because I, I learned that pretty quickly. Four of the schools, and by the way, twelve of the fourteen schools were represented today. Um, I'm not saying they're in the meeting, but I, I know a couple others and I reached out to them. So I, I have data from twelve of the fourteen schools. Um, the only ones I don't have data from is Comanche and Regina. Uh, four schools are gonna delay. So they're gonna push either, they're either pushing into June or July. Uh, some haven't set dates yet. And four schools are just undecided. They're kind of like us, like what do we do? Um, we, we try to have something on May seventeenth? Do we delay? We try to do a combo of a pre-recorded versus whatever. So, so anyway, so we've got peer-student data coming from our senior leaders. We have uh, a survey data that I sent out, or Beau sent out for me um, to all of our parents and students. I shared that data with you. And then we have data from our River Valley Conference schools on kind of what they're thinking. So I would love to have your feedback. As a high school principal, there's lots of times where I get in situations where I know when I make a decision, it's, it's not the right decision in somebody's eyes. Okay? So this is one of them. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what I decide or what we decide. Uh, there is going to be a group that thinks that's a terrible idea. So there, it's not, this is not a win-win situation for anybody. We're, we're in a pandemic right now and we have to, that's why I want a data to back it up. Okay? Because I don't want to enter this just on my heart and my feelings because really, it doesn't, like Mr. Burnett said, this is not our graduation. Um, this is a kid's graduation. I really don't care. Um, honestly, I live a block away from the school and I can come here anytime and, and roll a graduation. I can organize it any way we want to organize it. So really, it's not really about me. It's about what's best for. So really, it's not really about me. It's about what's best for our community and for our kids. Um, but everybody does need to know kind of the the risk involved there. Um, prom was another topic. We have delayed prom. Um, I, I think every, every school in the River Valley Conference has delayed it and just postponed it, except one, West Liberty has canceled. Everybody else is optimistic to still get it in. In our meeting today, we were very adamant about making sure that prom happens before graduation. And there's, your high school principal, you, you don't ever want to have prom after you you hand out diplomas. That's just a a common sense thing. So um, I guess what we are thinking is if we do delay it to July 12th, um, we would have to have prom before that. So I don't know. I would love to have the board's feedback. Uh, I certainly, whatever we decide, I certainly want your blessing for that. Um, and we need to get communication out probably by the end of the week or first part of next week. Parents are wanting to know, but I think we've done our homework and now it's just a matter of pulling everybody's head together and think about what's best for our community. So I'll be quiet at that. Um, but that's kind of where we're at and I'll answer any questions you might have, but I would like to have your feedback on what your thoughts are.
Well, thank you for everything you did to try and prepare. I liked your idea as well, but personally, I agree. It's about the students and it's pretty clear what they want and what their families want. Far be it for me to tell them how to celebrate their graduation. I mean, it's kind of my take. I'm with you on that. I mean, if if they're loud and clear on what they want, as long as they're clear on the risks, I I think that's what we do.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. And I think what we need to, you know, what we'll need to have everybody understand is if we cannot do it, say, say we pick July 12th, it'll just have to be clear about then what's our next step? Is it to do that parade and that's how we we do it? Is it to just have kids come in and walk across the stage one at a time and hand them their diploma? Is it that we record those speeches at least and uh, you know, those kinds of things and throw that onto a onto a uh presentation? We're not, I can tell you, if we have to make a decision early July, we're not going to be able to pull a whole online graduation ceremony together. Like I said, three of the seniors will be gone. I will not be able to have the time to pull them all in um and record all this. I, we could do it now because we have personnel here to do it. But in July, we're not going to be able to pull all those pieces together. So I'll be clear about that, but we will have to have an alternate as far as, okay, if July 12th doesn't work, um, what's our next step? So I, I'm very, I don't know. I don't know what our numbers are going to look like by then, but um, I think we need to be prepared that not everybody that normally comes to graduation is going to be allowed into that gym. I just don't think our numbers are going to be up as high numbers by then. I could be wrong. I hope I'm wrong. But I'm really erring on the side of caution with this.
What happens if we pick, if you were to pick the July 12th and then that's just the date? Hopefully it opens up and you can do it normal, but you're prepared to do it the other way because as you get closer, probably going to know what your option is when you get a little bit closer. And then if we're stuck with having to do the virtual one, even though that's not what they want, you're stuck with it. But at least they can, because most likely some of these families are going to have a party or they're going to do something, whether they're supposed to, not supposed to, they're getting together, but trying to send out an invitation on a uh, I hope it's July 12th, but you might want to try and just save the whole summer for what we might do. Um, isn't a real good invitation to send out. And so to respect the families that are probably going to do something, hopefully by July 12th, we by by the 1st of July, you're probably going to have an idea of what you're going to do because by then baseball is either happening or not happening. And if they do the summer sports, it's pretty obvious that they're going to open up for July 12th. If they ban the summer sports, you're still in limbo.
Yeah, Jeremy, good point. The the thing I'm going to say though is there, I'm not going to, on July 1st, I'm not going to be able to get get all those seniors in and film them one by one. I will not have time to do that. I will not have staff in the building that are under contract to help put that video together. Um, we can do the senior speeches and make it kind of a a makeshift type of thing. But if we're going to make this look as real as we can, um, I need to get working on that. I can't do that in in a couple of days. I just can't. So but I agree, we can, we can do the parade and we can figure out a way to get them their diplomas or whatever it is and we can do a makeshift plan on July 1 if we had to. It's just not going to be maybe at the level that that we could put it together right now. That's all.
Mark, what if you did kind of a a hybrid of the ideas where you're doing maybe not everything you were thinking of with the digital route, but some of it still while you have the staff here? Because even if best case, when we get the Ju- July 12th or the full go and we got a full gym, like you said, you're still not going to necessarily have the band or the choir. So having an additional video presentation might be nice and would be another way to kind of round out the ceremony. Um, and then you still got something kind of in the can, so to speak, if we aren't able to congregate as as much as we want on the 12th.
Yeah, I mean, if, what I'm thinking is we could basically do everything from the recordings except the seniors coming in one by one. Because I don't want to waste people's, like, this is going to be like a whole week-long project of of people having to splice videos of all those individual seniors. So I think we can throw the the senior speeches together. I mean, if you guys tell me you want to do all that, fine, but um, I'm just, I don't want to waste a bunch of people's time if we're going to essentially, I'm preparing two graduations that way and that's a lot. When I'm trying to finish teacher evaluations and trying to get senior awards night together, um, I I guess feeling a little overwhelmed if I have to do this twice, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I was thinking just the senior speech part was kind of what I was talking about, not the, not the walking.
Yeah, I can't hear anything. I only heard of course what Mark said that I was talking and then Rob started talking. So I don't think he could hear me at all.
I could hear you.
I could hear Tim before and he could hear me, but no one else could hear us.
You
I think I think, but I think something's wrong. Let me look at something real quick, guys.
Because people are going in and out and getting frozen.
Yeah, in the, in the Meet Admin tool, it shows Joe Burnett's got two meetings going on, one being the last meeting. I think, let me send you another link, Tara. Why don't you try this again? I think you're in the wrong meeting.
I can hear Tara.
I can too, but I don't know how she's coming through. Something's weird.
I don't see her on my sidebar.
No, she's on somebody else's connection somehow. I'm not exactly sure. I can't see because something's weird.
I can only see Linda and Tara.
Oh, I can see everybody except Tara.
Yeah, I don't see Tara or Tim.
Oh, I don't see Tim either.
I don't see Tim either. Here, let me send that email to Tim too.
Bo, Denise, Jimmy.
So I think we're missing a couple people.
But they come, they come in and out. Sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not.
Yeah, it feels like someone in our meeting has two sessions open and the audio is just kind of looping through accidentally. Kind of digging into this in the admin logs. Bear with me, guys.
Okay, I'm going to leave here and see what happens.
Okay.
You know, it must be me because anytime Tara or um Tim talks, it says I'm talking. So
It is you, Linda.
Let me, oh no. All right. So how do I get out of here?
Do you have multiple Meet tabs open? Just look at your tabs and see if you have multiple ones that say Meet. At the very top of your screen.
Oh, yes, I do.
Close one of them or even close both of them. If we lose you, I'll send you an email and you can get right back in. It's no biggie.
All right, I closed one.
Okay, that should help. I see Tara on our list now.
Oh, it was me.
Tara now, hi.
It was me.
Oh, you troublemaker. Now if we can just get
All right, I, yeah, Tim needs to come back. I see Tara. There. Yay, I see Tara. Oh, I'm talking.
Still no Tim.
We'll have this all figured out when they get it all released. Then we'll be able to meet again.
Pretty much.
I wondered what you were talking about, Joe, when you said it was like Jeopardy when people were popping up. I'm like, no one's popping up. And then I never heard Denise say anything if she did respond and I never saw her and now all of a sudden I see everybody. I was talking after Mark got done and all of a sudden Rob started talking and I was like, wait, maybe no one can hear me.
I can hear you, but I was the troublemaker.
Shoot. We took two steps backwards with our technology. We did so good in our first virtual meeting, but what happened?
I think um some people didn't go back to their calendar for the link. They just went to your emails and found an old email. Um, always when you're using Google Meet, always look to your calendar for the latest invite.
Okay.
Um, I still don't see Tim. It kind of looks like he's still hanging out in the old meeting because it's still ongoing.
Uh, Bo, did you send him a new email?
I did. Did he not get it? Do I need to send it again?
Not get it.
Okay, well, let me send it again. One more.
Yeah, just click out of the one you were in and he should be sending you a new email.
I just did again. Hopefully I didn't finger anything.
Everyone now, or I only saw you and Linda before. Okay.
Did he get my email?
Yes, hold on.
Not a problem.
Uh, it should be right under the first part, should say the meeting.
Tara can just speak for us. Tara's in and out.
Sorry.
At least Tara's names, eh.
There we go. Okay. Bye.
Oh, there's Tim Barrett joined. Yep.
Okay, now we, I think now we have everyone.
Yay.
Tara, do you want to give your perspective of what you were talking about?
Sure, sure. I um, as a parent of a senior, obviously, I agree 100% with Mark's initial idea. I have huge concerns that we are not going to able to do anything in July. And like Mark said, if it ends up being a last minute decision, we plan on doing it. I don't think it'll be anything near as cool as what has been planned. Um, my heart goes out to the kids. I mean, I completely understand them wanting to actually have the ceremony. I just don't want the disappointment of it being less than what they initially could have had if we did the virtual parade and whatnot. Um, Carly and I have talked about it a lot and um she was one of them that agreed with the virtual graduation and thought it was a really cool idea. Um, I, I don't know, I just don't trust that we'll be able to do anything come July, just with the the unknowns. So I don't know, you know, kind of what everyone else is thinking. Rob, I could hear a little bit of what you said, but that was at the point it was cutting in and out. So and I didn't hear, I don't think I heard hardly anything of what Jeremy said. I heard him say something about if we have sports, maybe, you know, that'll be taking up those times too, if I heard him correctly. So I don't know.
Yeah, basically what I said was, I I thought Mark's plan was great, but to me, it's kind of, I mean, it might technically be our call, but it's really about what the students and the parents collectively want. To me, that's what's most important. So um, yeah, I think figuring out a way that allows us to be flexible is important, but it's, no matter how you slice it, it's a kind of a bad deal, but I definitely get what you're saying, Tara. I thought it was a good plan to begin with, so.
Mark, I think that if we do end up going the direction of um July 12th, I, like you said, I mean, it needs to be very specific that this will not be, you know, as grand as what we could have done and, you know, we we don't really know what that will look like exactly and you'll be short-staffed as far as having helped people help you. That and I think with the survey that was given, you know, it was very, it wasn't very specific and now listening to everything that you were saying that you would like to do, I mean, I think it sounds pretty cool.
Mark, what's the last, what's your last um, like your deadline for to be able to do one versus the other? I mean, obviously you need to start, but if Joe says that they're going to make a decision on your summer sports on June 1st, that's, that's, I mean, if they say, yes, you're going to do it at June 1st, that changes things quite a bit for a July 12th graduation. They say, no, you're not doing anything June 1st as far as summer sports, then you're 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 basically, they're they're apparently going to lock the state down for the rest of the summer, which I will not be surprised. Like, how are they going to open up? Like, you take U triple S A baseball and softball for these kids. We're just going to go to 800 people out of baseball field now in a month? That'd be ridiculous. So I fear that regardless of what people want, we have to, it it's going to be a a decision made by the state and it's probably not going to be what anybody wants to hear and this, opening up the state rapidly is not the best idea. So the virtual one's probably where we're going to be at, but I guess I'm asking, can you wait and delay it to that decision on June 1st, so to speak, of what we're doing this summer? Is that possible or not possible and to go from there? Bo, why are you shaking your head? Just kidding.
Well, a couple of things here. First of all, if we're going to film kids, like graduates, it has to happen before school's out this summer. Because once, once we collect their Chromebook and once we kind of send them on their way, I will never be able to get 54 kids in here to film them one at a time, receiving their diploma, to put it into a um, like splice it into a a graduation ceremony. So I I would say once school's out, that's going to be a disaster. I think it's going to be tough anyway. I think it's going to be hard to get the kids to come in um even now, but I think we can, with making phone calls and engaging parents, I think we could pull it off if we started next week. But I think if we try to do that on on June 1st, uh, it's going to be a disaster. And one, once they do open things up, I think people are going to be gone all over the place. Um, so there's a lot of things that make me nervous about delaying this thing um because, yeah, so.
Like you had mentioned too, Mark, um, with a few kids, two or three kids that are going to basic training, I mean, we're already starting to lose them and I mean, I want as many people to be able to participate as possible, but I do agree with you that they're just going to kind of drop off in numbers as the summer progresses.
And we had five that graduated early or four that graduated early. So you know, I don't know if we delay it or if we're going to get them back. They've already been out of the building since December. So I don't know. It's a tough decision. It really is.
I agree.
One, one of the things from what Tara said earlier is probably need to get a communication out there that details what you talked about, Mark. Something very detailed about what you're planning, what you're all trying to get done because if 70% of the respondents basically are like a, no way, I ain't doing a virtual one because they don't understand everything of what you're trying to accomplish, you're going to end up with 10 people showing up for a virtual one because everybody's boycotting it. But your idea sounds wonderful, but if you can prove to all the people that need to be there that it's a great idea, that's what you're going to have to do. Like, you're going to have to sell the idea as best as you can with a good explanation of what you're trying to do because this is, it's the only for sure way to have a a real ceremony is to do it virtually.
I I agree. And I I thought we were pretty clear, Bo, correct me if I'm wrong. When we sent the survey, we put in there pre-recorded, we put in there, um, you know, come in individually, put in there the parade. The problem is if you get too much detail, I get hammered. You believe this, believe it or not, I get people that The problem is if you get too much detail, I get hammered. You believe this, believe it or not, I get people that email me sometimes and say, your emails are too long. So I try to be as concise as I can because I can tell you, let me look at these. We only had 67 responses, so that tells me there's a whole lot of parents and a whole lot of kids that didn't open up that email. They did not even open it up or they're not checking their email.
Out my text too, Mark. So they ignored the text message we sent them to.
Right.
I, I tried to get multiple methods of communication today because this is important for them. I get it. I don't want them to miss out, so trying everything we can for them. And the reason I was shaking my head, it's gonna take probably a couple of weeks worth of time to put those videos together, just from the technical side. I mean, the graduation video takes Lisa a chunk of time now.
Mark, I, you know, when you sent the survey out, I right away, you know, was in favor of the virtual one, but hearing everything you said and the way that you said it tonight, it just sounds so much better than, you know, what we had read in the survey. And I mean, obviously having you be able to explain it a little more in depth, you know, I think you really realize what a big deal this would be. It's not just gonna be, oh, well, you know, you come by yourself and walk across the stage and you're done. There's a lot more time and effort and, you know, cool stuff put into it and it's just a very different feeling hearing you talk about it.
What if um, just as a thought, is there any way you could invite all the parents and students in type and I know it could be a fiasco, but we'd have the ability to mute it where Mark, you could explain this to anybody that wanted to join in on a virtual chat like this to give you, or at least give them the options. We either got A, a virtual one, or B, you know, the real one potentially in July. And then people can send their feedback once they hear more of the information, just like what we've heard tonight. Is that even a possibility?
Sounds like a disaster to me.
I know, we go, well, I, I can't imagine.
His explanation tonight was pretty nice. I could just pull the recording. We could share that on Facebook.
That would be good, I think.
What about putting it on Facebook and then the blue and gold uh, publication thing? Can you put it on there? Because I actually follow that, not that I have a senior anywhere near a senior, but if there's people following that, then they can start, then they'll go to, go to their email and look at that survey and actually fill the survey out, maybe.
You're funny.
I, I can tell you that when I had my two seniors in here and I explained, I probably did a better job of explaining it to them. Um, they, their big thing is they are a tight, this is their exact words, we are a tight-knit class. We never had a chance to say goodbye to everybody. We want that final face-to-face together. We, I know that everybody's gonna be in their cars and things like that, but we want to be in the same room with everybody. And I told them, I said, in July, you're probably not gonna get that. On a normal May ceremony, you would, but July, I'm just telling you, it's probably not gonna happen. And they were very adamant about that, so. I don't know if we're gonna convince at least the students differently. I really, I think there's some, but there's others that are 100% adamant about having a face-to-face, even if we have to wait till August. And you'll probably have 150 different um, correspondences or responses if you bring them all into a room. And they'll have 100 different ideas.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I think if everyone knows the risk is if we go July 12th, that it, you know what, it may or may not happen. And the alternative is, we may have a situation where we just have a parade where we hand out the diplomas and just have a, a, I don't wanna say piecemeal, but a little bit, you know, a less virtual graduation that we would have had if we'd have planned May 17th, if they know that going into it and that's what they want. Again, it's, it's their families and their kids and you know what? That's what we'll provide.
And we, we can have everything recorded. I mean, I mean, Mr. Burnett, you can give your opening. I can give the outstanding senior in the citizenship. We can have the two seniors give their speeches. We can do all that in a, a short amount of time. Um, it's just all those individual student things that what Bo's talking about, it's gonna take a couple of weeks. So Bo, correct me if I'm wrong, can we pull that together at the beginning of July if we had to?
I, I don't know. I mean, it, July becomes a busy season for the business side of the school, getting things ready and everything else, so it's gonna be tough. I'm pretty preoccupied then. Lisa might have time. If she's willing to do it at that point, she's not really there. I I don't want to promise a lot that time of year, Mark. There's a lot going on. That's why I say we kind of need to plan it now if we're gonna plan the virtual thing, like, you know, I hate to be that way, though.
There'll still be a lot of neat things though with the virtual thing in July with, again, the speeches, the senior video, you know, where we do the video where they got their baby picture and their senior picture and that, that stuff will run through and then, you know, the Lisa Taylor Fern's gonna make the video now regardless of whether we do it on the 17th or the 12th. You know, she can get that video prepped, you know, the elementary years, the middle school years, the high school years, that sort of thing. You know, and if we have to do it outside on the 12th of, of July, if that's the date and we do the parade that day and just hand them out and hand the key cards to them, so be it, in my opinion. But it buys us time and there's an actually a shot to do it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I say we put the video together now, Bo, and we just don't have each student come in individually, leave that part out because that's gonna be the tricky part, which is kind of risky to be bringing kids into the building right now when we're in closure anyway. Um, so I, I think we maybe plan to put everything together now, have that ready as kind of a, a, you know, a second plan, I guess. We're gonna have to do that with senior awards night anyway. So we're gonna have to have that together. We already ordered the thumb drive, so we could certainly just put senior awards on the thumb drive and then if we can't have that live ceremony, just have that ready to go. I think that's what Rob was saying. Um, and just leave out the individuals coming in across the stage and they would just get it in the parade. That's what I'm.
Well, we recognize them, we recognize them individually that day of the parade, you know, this is
Right.
Mark Snively, you know, etceteras. Linda Duncan and they're red off in front of the school as we drive by and we hand them their diploma, but everything else can be pre-done now.
Yeah, and Lisa's already working on the senior video. That, that normally starts around here anyways, trying to get senior photos from a whole class takes a while.
I'm good with that. If everybody else is thinking that might be the way to go, at least we got a backup. It may not be quite as cool, but I think we can still, there, I think we can still make it pretty cool um, to release that video on whatever day and then have the parade and, you know, do all that. But I think, I, I think we need to make a decision. I, I think if we involve all of our stakeholders, we're just gonna muddy the waters a little bit. I think we need to make a decision and just go with it.
Is it okay to hear from the board to say, listen, if the majority of people wanna, really, it's an A or B thing right now. A, May 17th virtual, B, we wanna have a real-time one on July 12th. And obviously if the state doesn't allow that to happen, then we'll have to have a virtual situation on July 12th, but is the board okay with going with what the majority of the survey results are? Or not? Or do you want to make your own decision? I mean, I, really, that's what it comes down to. Do you want to go with the survey or do you, you make the, I mean, you're the board.
The biggest thing is, this is a, no one is gonna win here.
Exactly.
That's the biggest thing we need to look at. We also need to recognize that it's the world we're living in right now. Unfortunately, not everybody's gonna get what they want right now. I'd love to be doing whatever I wanted right now too, but I can't. Um, July, what is it, 12th? Is that what we're looking at? And maybe Jeremy, you might have a better idea on this than a lot of us. Do you think we're even gonna be, everything's gonna be back by July 12th? I, I just, I don't know. Mark, your first idea, I think, and I'm going back to say if I had a senior, I think that would, that would be awesome for the kids and I, yeah, that's just where I'm gonna leave it. But again, it's, no one is gonna win here. You're not gonna make everybody happy.
I agree. That is the bottom line. We cannot please everyone. I like the idea of the July 12th. Trying to have it live, but be prepared that it may have to be virtual also. Depends on what the state of affairs is. I know, like Tim said, we can't get what we want. We're trying to do the best we can. So that's my two cents. I think July 12th, let's postpone it to July 12th. Get everything prepared. If we have to do it virtually-ish, like the parade and drive-through, but if we could have it like we normally have it, that would be great. I know we're gonna lose some kids, but that's just how it's gonna have to be.
Can I ask a question then? Um, if we do that, and let's pretend that the social distancing numbers are at 150 at that point. So that would mean that we cannot have parents with the graduates. So at that point, do we just have the graduates attend? Or do we move to the virtual so the parents can be involved? That'll be the next decision. And the next question is gonna come my way, so I guess I'd kinda like to know that upfront too.
I guess my thing is if it's at 150, it would probably just have to be the students. Because here's what I'm hearing you say, the students, since they're a tight-knit group, really want to be able to do it themselves, I guess. Yes, I know parents, I know stu- but what I'm hearing is that they want them. So that probably would work. Just have the students and, you know, people, you know, the board and uh, to be able to hand out the diplomas and then just do it that way. That's an idea.
And we would, we would livestream it if it was just to students and then everybody could see it. I mean,
Right, right.
They wouldn't be involved, but yeah, okay. Just wanted your guidance on that. Okay.
Well, there are questions from Mark in terms of graduation. Just the conversations we're having here, that, that's a repeat of, you know, the in-depth conversations we've had all week, you know, and, and um, we had them between Will and Durant, between Mr. Snably and Mr. Diedrichs and, you know, and just what are the pros and cons, but I think um, by bringing the students in and trying to get feedback from the parents, every, I mean, what everyone has said is correct. Um, and I, I often say to the principals, what's our best position to defend? Right? You know, at the end of the day, when people do question us, what's our best positioning to defend why we made the decision we did? And I think when it comes to graduation and things that involve the students, if you're defending the will of the majority of the students and their families, I think that's the best hill to defend from. And just, that's just my opinion. And because again, this is their community, these are their kids and this is their class. And so if we try to make the best decisions on the majority of them, I realize it won't make everybody happy, but I can live on, I can defend that hill easier than I could if it's like, hey, this was my idea. Or, you know, this is what we thought was a good idea as an administrative team. So, and you're the ones as board members that will get calls too. I know some of you have gotten already messages from parents and whatnot, and so I want to give you the best information to defend what your decision is as a board as well. So I appreciate the feedback tonight. Um, and certainly we're open to more feedback too, but that's, that's how we're trying to approach it and that's been our strategy.
I guess the last thing I'll add, and then I'll be quick because I think I've talked too much already. Um, if you're gonna put a survey out there and ask people what they want to do and then just completely not even attempt to do what they asked you to do, I think you're, you're, you're never gonna get surveys to work ever again.
I agree. I agree.
So you, you're doing a July 12th, we're going to attempt to listen to what the, the majority wanted to do, but they all have to understand that it may never happen. And you're, you're going to know probably in June that you're really set up to not be able to do it, because once again, if they don't open up summer sports, they're not gonna let, they're not gonna let a graduation go on. And then you're stuck with the virtual one and that's, we need to make the most of it and as a board member, I'll help you, whatever I can help you do. I'm fine with helping get that set up the best that it can be for those kids. But I think you have to try and do what the survey asks you to do. And then, but always make sure you've got the other option in your pocket because you're probably gonna be stuck with that one. Because I don't see them doing a, we're now at 10, then we're gonna go to 50, then we're gonna go to 150, because you have to look at each person's going to be in, like when I look at all my employees here, I figure every employee's probably going into contact with another five people outside of this building. Which means right away, I've got almost 500 people that I have to try and protect from COVID-19. So if you do a 50, you're still at the same struggle that you're gonna have if you have 100 or if you have 200. So they're either gonna open it up or they're not going to, and they're gonna tell you to socially be responsible with what you're doing. If you're at risk, please stay home. If you're this, do that. And so I don't know that they're going to do some kind of pyramid open up from some of the stuff that I see, but I might be wrong. I hope I'm wrong in every way possible with COVID-19, but I don't think I'm too far off. Um, but that's my two cents again.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Um, we will move forward if everybody's okay with that, of just virtually putting those pieces together so it's in our back pocket. And then um, move the date to July 12th and then have that disclaimer out there of following social distancing guidelines. There's a possibility we could even move it outside of the football field. Um, or there's a chance that we'll have to just limit it to graduates or maybe even graduates and parents depending on those numbers, but they need to understand that there, there's gonna be some parameters on there and it's probably gonna look a little different not having band and choir involved like we normally do. That's kind of what I'm thinking. I just want to let you know that, so if that's not right, I need you to say that because I want to get that letter out to parents and students.
As we joke up here with the verbiage of the day, the metrics are fluid. Okay.
Who would have ever thought that we would be talking about something like this?
I know. It's crazy.
Yep.
Denise, you look bored. You want to give us some elementary highlights?
Joe, I'm never bored. Well, Jeremy's rocky learning curve is all what Will and Elementary is about right now. We rocked the early stages of getting the food out and meeting everybody and getting to their hearts and we rocked the second stage of getting activities out and getting kids engaged and getting teachers trained and their learning curve with Google Meets was fantastic. And now we really are in that stage of being charged with moving the kids academically, and it has become very difficult. So we'll get through it and I think um, they're all doing the best they can, but we are really in a interesting spot right now. Um, we kind of moved through the paperwork decisions. We're not, we're cleaning lockers out at the elementary at the end of the year. The associates are coming in and doing it now, but we're gonna wait with their stuff because most of the kids who needed stuff have already come up to get it. Um, and then at the end of the year, we'll have an exchange between all the locker stuff and the stuff that was in their cubbies and their old teacher note and then give them their step-up new teacher day note and we can deliver that as well as collect their Chromebooks. That way, when they bring their Chromebook out without a charger, we can remind them to go back in and get the charger and it will take hopefully a little bit off the parents' plate having to get them in here. So that's our plan for end of the year. Um, our return to learn plan is also a little rocky because we don't have the guidance from the state yet. We know we'll have until July 1 to submit that, but similar to graduation, we have to have a plan in place. So we're gonna try to double or tripper, triple our school, summer school offerings. We're still looking at uh, teacher availability and hoping to start toward the end of July and run it for three weeks like we always do our summer school. We're looking at a one to nine ratio of kids so that we can stay under that 10 person in one room or gathering. Um, limit that potentially will still be on us. Um, and we're trying to figure out what kids we need in there. So that's kind of where we are in the elementary. Um, we're four and a half weeks into it and the biggest of uh, I meet twice a week with the teachers. Um, and the biggest thing they've come up with is full group like this with their 25 kids is best to do fun things and social activities. And their real teaching is happening in groups of four or five and then they're trying to get to individual groups with many kids. So that's kind of where we are. We're still holding IEP meetings. We're still, we're developing class lists. We're still doing our supply lists and requisitions, getting all. We're still doing our supply lists and requisitions, getting all that ready to go. Yeah, and that's kind of where we are. When I was on my way up here today, I saw one of our teachers about 10 feet away on a sidewalk with a kid and she had her whiteboard. And it was quarter to five and she was scripting out a language art lesson to him. So I mean, our teachers, again, like they are, they are just absolute rock stars. But there is no path for this one. So we're trying to do the best we can to head down the right path.
One of the things Governor Reynolds talked about Friday is giving schools, taking away, how do I say this, waiving start date. Of August 23rd. And I, Rob and I have talked about this and I've talked to some people, you know, the administrative teams in both Will and Durant. At this point, my recommend, some, you know, everybody's got a different opinion on this. The biggest thing that impedes us from really going a whole lot sooner is the fact that. Not 100% of our buildings are air conditioned here and that's even, it's a lot less than that in Durant. So if we were to start school, let's say the first week in August or the second week in August, and we would have to let out early due to heat. We really didn't gain anything. And number two, we're looking at having our summer schools more of a jumpstart program in both districts this year where we've got hopefully three weeks. Of having summer school in that first part of August as well. And so we're trying to capture and get some time with those kids, you know, at that level. We're also seeing how much, how can, how much can we open up our summer school, not only with our at-risk kids, but other kids too. And so we're exploring all kinds of different opportunities with that. There's some additional dollars that are coming to. Our district through the care funding. Is it I care or care, Denise?
Care, because the C is COVID.
Okay, that's why I thought it was care, but everything's I something today. So it's not I care, it's. The care programming. And we anticipate that being around a little over $90,000, but that's something that can be used for all kinds of things, for technology. You could use it for summer school. You could even use it for potentially feeding kids. There's, there's a lot of stuff that can be used for it. It's very broad based. Okay, but that may be an opportunity to expand our summer school options as well. But we, as information comes in, we will keep you posted. But that's the second reason, you know, for not looking at the start date. The third is we'd have to make some decisions here relatively soon as if we were going to change the start date. And as Mark said, in one of our administrative meetings, let's say that the restrictions are. You know, loosened up. And people can start to do a few things in August. I think you're going to have a lot of people taking off and want to do something too. And so we got to weigh that into it as well. And of course, there's definitely, you know, nobody knows what the future holds, but they're also talking about the second wave of COVID that could come in, you know. In the fall or next winter. So no one really knows what the future is. But in terms of moving the start date, I just don't know if there's, number one. Logistically with our facilities, can we do it? And number two, what do we truly gain by, let's say, starting a week earlier or 10 days earlier? I don't know. But that's certainly up to the board, but it's not just this board, it's also Durant's board. You know, we got a common. Calendar and schedule with them. We've got MCC we work with, with their scheduling as well. So it's not just as easy as, hey. Hey, Will, we're going to start on August 10. You know, that affects, you know, teacher contracts. They have to know what's going on and. It's, it's kind of, it's complicated. That's all.
My concern, obviously logistics are quite prohibitive, but. I, I can anticipate the state not allowing us to. Or not granting a waiver for any COVID related days next year. I, I'd expect we'll probably have to make them up. That's just my opinion. That's not based on anything, but. I, I think the more we can have a plan in place, whatever it is. So that we're not potentially extending next year if that second wave does hit. That was more kind of my thinking, whether you could do, you know, a couple AM only since we're on an hour basis instead of a day basis. I understand logistics are a mess, but that was just kind of where I was coming from with it.
Absolutely, Rob. And you know what? We, we talk about it. It's not just a, hey, we're not doing it. It's like. You know, like we, Rob and I talked about, you know, if it affects A and then B, how's B affect C and how that goes back, you know, so there are so many. Dominos that fall. I think what you'll see next year, Rob. You know, this spring, everything was done on the fly in terms of voluntary, required, online components or whatnot. I think with the experiences we've gained this spring, but also from the state level. I can't, I'd like to believe, and I do believe, we'll be better prepared if in fact we have a shutdown, if you will. At some point next year due to, you know, a second wave of COVID or whatnot. And I think we'll give, hopefully, I'm giving better guidance. So we're not just making this stuff up on the fly from the state level, which circles down to us. So hopefully. You know, that'll be better prepared so we can be better prepared. But we'll see. I mean, I can't, can't guarantee that. But I agree with you. It will be required. I mean, I, I think there'll definitely be more, you know, standards. Implemented with that, but you know, I welcome that. But just tell us what you want. We'll do it. That's all. You know, as a state level, you know, the state, the DE says they do this. I have no doubt it will rise to the level of what their expectations are and more. So are there any questions on that in case you get anything in the community about the start date or whatnot and why that's being waived and so forth? Okay, any questions for Denise?
I just want to make a quick comment across the board, the elementary, the high school. Obviously I have kids that span the entire area. So I just wanted to say that I really, really appreciate all the extra work and extra time. And yeah, it was just a little jumbled and crazy at first, but it's really settled in and it's. There's a schedule, there's a routine which I appreciate and I know my kids are those little routine robots. They appreciate it. The teachers that have reached out to my kids has been awesome. I mean, text messages, emails, FaceTimes. You know, you name it, it's been done. I definitely think it's above and beyond at a lot of levels and. It's, it's a lot of extra work, a lot of extra work. And you guys as administration are doing a great job of keeping everything in line and rolling this out. I mean, I have to admit, my kids didn't do a lot the first couple of weeks. I was kind of trying to read them a little bit as far as stress levels go and how they were feeling and. Once it was said that, you know, we're not going back, then it was like, okay, we're digging our toes in here and here we go and. So far it's worked out well. Granted, we're just, you know, Mike, like I said, my kids are just starting off with the work this week, but. There's different, with a different age of my kids, there's obviously gradies, you know. The, the elementary kids, they, they'd want to go all for it. They want to do as much as they can. And then we'd roll into Briggs who's going to junior high and it's kind of. You know, so and Carly, I think, I mean, she unfortunately is at the point where it's just like. I just feel done, you know, and you know, she had kind of made the comment that. She wished she would have known her last day. It was her last day. So, but with those feelings aside and kind of realizing that graduation. It's not going to be what you hoped. She's kind of, she's kind of ready to move on with it. But and Taylor too, I mean, the high school teachers have been great, emails and. All the online stuff they're doing, so. Great job, guys. And I really, really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Tara. That means a lot and. You know, from the outside looking in, people don't, may not always realize it, but you know, we really try to. Put a lot of thought into all the decisions we make and try to make, take nothing lightly, you know, and really debate and say, again. What, how's this affect this, that or whatnot and. And hopefully at the end of the day, it gives us a better product for our kids and their families, but thank you. All right, Mark, do you want to talk about anything from the high school level and then we can wrap it up? Other than graduation and prom?
Well, we, we talked about graduation, we talked about prom and senior awards night. We'll get that. Pre-recorded as well. What we're doing with the scholarships is we. Mr. Patterson reached out to everyone or is reaching out to everyone. And we're going to give him the option to come in and present that in the green screen room live. Or just have him present it. And a lot of them, between him and I, we present anyway. But we felt, we really felt like we needed to give some of those people an opportunity to present their own scholarship. So we kind of gave them that option and once we get kind of the number on that, we'll start organizing that. And I plan to have that recorded and release that on senior awards day. So on the normal day when we'd have senior awards. Just do it then and then. We'll put that on the zip drive too. So we'll put it out on Facebook. I think that's what Bo and I decided today anyway. And then, which we don't normally put on Facebook, but we just thought with the situation we're in. We need to try to communicate that in a timely manner. And then just put it on that zip drive, that thumb drive that we give seniors in their packets on the last. Day, which is normally at commencement. So. That's really our online learning. We did adjust the times a little bit. We found. Teachers came to me after the first couple of weeks and said, our eight o'clock class is not good right now. Kids aren't getting in there and. So I listened to them and said, okay, what do we need to do? And they said, let's start at 10. So we're going 10, 11. We're having a lunch break in there. So go 12:30, 1:30, 2:30 for Skinny and just still finish up by 3:45. So I think that's been better. I'm worried about losing kids as we get the sunny and 70 weather coming here in May. It is voluntary, so that is a concern. We are waiting on final guidance from the Department of Ed as far as what we do with grading. So I'm hoping to get communication out to that early next week on that, but. We're looking at going with the pass fail model and giving kids every opportunity to pass. So we're going to show a little grace as we do this, but just. If kids need to do something prior to closure on March 13th, we're going to hand deliver that and give them every opportunity to pass. And really just kind of, I did hear something interesting. One of the schools I talked to today, all of their classes that they're doing. For this semester, they're calling it COVID-19 general science, COVID-19 American history. The reason they're doing that is when that transcript goes to the next level, the, the college or institution will know. That, okay, this was a class they took during the whole COVID situation, so they might not have the skills. You know, acquired than normally a student does. So. I thought that was kind of a clever idea. So that's something administratively, we probably need to talk about putting on our transcript too. To kind of designate that. So I thought that was interesting. So there's just a lot of things that we need to finalize. As far as getting kids here to get the stuff, stuff out of their lockers and things like that, but it's. The message is becoming very clear, especially after meeting with all of you tonight on how to move forward and. Now it's just communicating to the parents and rolling it and taking it one day at a time as it comes. That's, if you have questions about our academic plan, I think it's going well. But I do have, I do have concerns moving into May, like how are we going to keep them engaged in the voluntary plan? So everybody in our, in the conference, I believe, except one district, maybe two, is voluntary. There's a couple that have moved to required, but they're, they're staying voluntary and kind of doing similar things to what we're doing. So questions for me?
Thank you for doing that with the scholarships, Mark. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll have to get that information out somehow. So I think if we deliver that in a couple of different platforms and. Again, try to make it as real as we can without having students come up on stage. Will be good and we'll have Coach Hessler come up and he'll do the athletic awards just like that too in the green screen room. So. And then all that stuff will just have to hand out at commencement or. Out in the parking lot. If we do the virtual one, just hand it all out together. It'll be a little more cumbersome, but. That'll be the finality piece to it.
Right? And that has to happen sooner than later because obviously with that scholarship money, kids, that's important that people know. There's some big dollars that come with that stuff and how's that going to affect their fall plans? So that's nothing we can wait and do in July. That has to be done, you know, during the month of May, like normal. Were there any final questions for the principals? I sure appreciate all they've done and you know what? You're only as good as the team that you have and I'm very blessed to have a very good team. So good work, guys.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, definitely. This goes, everybody is going above and beyond.
Well, we've certainly learned a lot and in my pandemic education folder that I've started for the next time. I deal with this, hopefully not, but we'll have a little bit of. Experience, right? But that being said, if there's nothing else, that's what we had for the work session. And we'll go into an exempt session here for just a few minutes to go over. Have a non-certified, min-salaried and benefits packages that. Will be brought to the board for approval at the May regular meeting. But we usually go over with the board. So you have time to digest and ask questions if you want Stacy to run different numbers, et cetera. But. Otherwise, Bo can go, Denise and Mark. And Derek, we'll give you the night, rest the night off, Derek.
Well, yeah, thanks, Joe. Hey, before I go, if Mark is still there, can I ask? Who are the presidents that you were talking to, Mark? The student council and the class presidents for the seniors, who, who are they?
Taylor Garvin, or not Taylor Garvin, yeah, Taylor Garvin and Scott Martin.
And which is which?
Um, Scott is the student council, Taylor's the class president. Did I say that right?
No, I think it's the other way around.
Scott, Scott is class president?
Tell Carly to quit hiding on camera and just come help.
Yeah, she just said that it's the other way around.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Scott is class president, Taylor Garvin is council president.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't remember.
That's okay.
Carly, have you been underneath the table the whole time?
Not the whole time. We just, she was just listening on the graduation part. She was watching us live on YouTube and decided she should come sit by me instead.
That's awesome.
All right, thanks, guys. I'm out.
Bye bye.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, guys. All right, Joe. So we're done with the livestream and we're done with the recording, correct? Correct. All right, let me get that stopped for you and I'll hop out of the meeting and you guys have fun on your own. All right. All right, goodbye, guys. Have a good night.